Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, June 23, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Public participation in this meeting, this is our second regular meeting with the public welcome with physical distancing put in place. So you can attend here in person, or you can watch or listen to the meeting live on Channel 4, or you can view the meeting at LHCaz.gov/tv. We are still accepting written public comment at any time to the city clerk's office. You can email the city clerk at cityclerk@LHCaz.gov one hour before any of our public meetings, and the city clerk will read your comments into the public record at the appropriate time. We will now have an invocation by Pastor Dean Wiles from Abundant Grace Church. Pastor?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just come before you tonight. We're just so thankful for your blessings upon us and upon this city. And God, we never want to take for granted what you have given to us. And so first of all, we just say thank you for Jesus who came and died, rose again, so that we could live. And Lord, we just thank you for this great community of Lake Havasu City. Lord, we thank you for our freedoms. We thank you for this great country that we live in. And God, as we go into this wild season that we're in, God, we ask for your blessings upon our community. God, we ask for your blessings and your favor upon our businesses. God, we just ask for your safety upon all the guests that come into our city to enjoy the lake and the different activities. Lord, I just take a moment now just to lift up our Mayor Cal to you, God, that you continue to keep your hand upon him, that you would give him your wisdom, God. And God, for Vice Mayor David and Councilmember Jenny and Jim and Gordon and Michelle and Donna, God, that you would give them a sense of the welfare and the true needs of the people here in Lake Havasu City. God, give them a thirst for justice and righteousness. And God, we just pray for our city manager Jess and all the staff, Jerry and Anthony and, God, the department heads, the attorney Kelly and city clerk Kelly and the administrative services director Jill and Stuart, God, and Sean in risk management and, God, our judge Mitchell, Lord, that you continue to use him in powerful ways and give him your wisdom, Lord. And for our fire chief Peter and our police chief Dan and the Parks and Rec director Mike and Public Works director Greg, God, I just pray that you would continue to keep your hand upon them, let they, help them to just have personal peace in their lives and joy in the task really that you have given them. God, for our council members, yeah, they've been, they've been put in place by a vote, but not just a vote, God. You allowed that vote to happen, and so, God, you've got great things for them, and I pray your blessings over our leadership of our city, the leadership of our state, the leadership of our country. God, I pray for those families that are represented here in this room right now and those that are listening, God, would you continue to be Jehovah Jireh, the Lord who provides? God, meet the needs that they have, continue to give those great health, God, and for those that may need healing, God, you are a God that heals, and we pray that you would just bring your healing touch upon them. God, again, we just ask your blessings over Lake Havasu City. We're so thankful, God, for this community. Lord, you are an awesome God, and I pray over this meeting now, God, that you would have your way, that your peace would be sensed. And God, for maybe those that question whether you're real, would you take away the question mark, and would you put an exclamation mark and show them how you love them? God, we give you glory and honor and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And we'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance by the Better Business Bureau of Lake Havasu City campus, Christina Hook.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Christina. If you would like to share a little bit about your organization?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Sheehy, Mayor, Vice Mayor David Lane, councilmembers. Please excuse the phone so I can make sure that I'm reading and not missing any pertinent information that I'd love to share with you tonight. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm Christina Hook, Regional Director of our local Better Business Bureau. Our mission is to create an ethical marketplace where buyers and sellers trust each other and to provide resources to help build better businesses. When the current crisis struck, the Better Business Bureau jumped into action to support small businesses. We created crucial support webinars on topics such as preparing yourself to apply for an SBA loan and navigating a new business model through these times. We offer virtual collaboration summits. Last week's topic was to empower women business owners, and next week, we will be supporting veterans as they re-enter the workforce. We're very proud to have launched the Main Street Matters Grant Program. This program provides emergency funding to small businesses who may have fallen through the cracks and not received any other funding through this challenging time. We have just awarded $30,000 in grants to our Pacific Southwest service area and will continue to do so through the four months of the program. We have awarded several Lake Havasu City businesses and will continue. Lastly, I'm proud to support our community as a member of the LHC Resource Alliance. Through this partnership, we can collaboratively serve the needs of our citizens and businesses to ensure our community thrives. Thank you and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you for all of your work, especially during this pandemic. I know your organization really stepped out. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you're a small business owner in town, applications are still open and they will be for three months. So if you've been affected by COVID in any way, had to shut down, have furloughs, please do apply. We'll get the information out to you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Before we move on to item four, just to explain to the folks in the room and also those watching today, some of the physical distancing that we're doing so we can bring these meetings back live is we have staff that will be joining us via Zoom, so you'll watch the big screen or just at home, it'll pop up on your television. But in order to make all of that happen, I do want to thank Jerry Bracchamani, who will be running Zoom in the back, Steve Blake for all of his efforts, Kelly, our city clerk in our IT department, that have put all of these pieces together so that we can continue to do the people's work of Lake Havasu City. So thank you for all of your efforts. We'll now move on to item four. Ms. Williams, if you could call the roll.
Councilmembers Jenny Koch?
Here.
Gordon Groth?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Donna McCoy?
Here.
Jim Dolan?
Present.
Vice Mayor David Lane?
Here.
Mayor Cal Sheehy?
Here.
Thank you. Moving on to item five is the Call to the Public. This is the opportunity where citizens have to address the city council within the jurisdiction with any matter within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. If you wish to address the council, you just make your way to the podium, you would state your name for the record and then make your comments. There is a light indicator box. Green means you have your three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that your time is up. If you're here to speak on one of the public hearings, we ask that you wait till that public hearing item. That way, we can have a two-way conversation, and you also have a couple more minutes to be able to address the city council. With that being said, you do not have to sign up, but we did have a couple of people sign up, so we'll start there, and then you can make your way after that. So first, we'll start with Lisa Kruger from the Lake Havasu Area Chamber of Commerce. Lisa? All right.
Can we have a timeout?
Yes.
There's a cord down here that the previous two people had wrapped around their feet, and I want to adjust it so they don't end up going down.
You're the right man to do that, Bob. Thank you. Yeah. How are we so lucky to have Surt in the room to take care of?
It's a cattle.
Yeah.
That'll give me 10 minutes speaking time.
Thank you, Bob. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor Sheehy and councilmembers and members of the audience, and thank you for fixing the cord because I am a klutz, and everybody that knows me knows that well. So preventing a black eye is always a good idea. So I am here this evening to introduce you to some of our more recent chamber members. I can't say that they're all brand-new chamber members, and by the way, I'm Lisa Kruger. I apologize, because we have not been able to do this for a few months. And so we had a tremendous response from chamber members that wanted to come tonight and be introduced, and so we kind of had to trim our list down a little bit so that we, you know, didn't violate the social distancing requirements. So I would like to introduce the members that are here this evening, and just as a reminder that it's the business community that keeps the sales taxes and all the other things going and keeps driving revenue into our local economy. So that's why it's important for us to let you know who those folks are. So first, I want to introduce Christie and Dan Behrens, who have two businesses, plus Electric Solar Solutions and Blue Mirage Pools and Spas. There they are. And we have Assisted Living Locators, Angie Foltz. Allstate Insurance, Devon England. Fumble fingers. Aflac, Shelley Mauer. Mojave Mortgage, Don Hanson. You guys are waving, right? From Amore Pie and More, and Tamara, I'm gonna probably say this wrong, Tamara Saracino? Yes! Tamara is a really good baker. I'm just gonna say that. And then from Metro Tax, we have Dana Quaid and Garrick Foy. And that is who I had on my RSVP list, so if other folks are here and I missed you, I apologize, but we'll do it again next time. So thank you all so much, and don't forget about the Candidate Forum next Monday evening, June 29 at 6:00 o'clock at the Aquatic Center. The room will be set up for adequate social distancing, and we hope you'll join us. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here, and congratulations to all the new business members. Would anyone else like to address the city council at the Call to the Public? Bob, if you just want to make your way to the podium?
Hi, my name is Bob McMillan, and the reason I'm speaking tonight is at the last city council meeting, talking about the budget, there was a showing of some areas that we could get additional money from, and I would just like to comment on a couple of those areas. Vice Mayor Lane asked for the public input regarding these matters, and I feel there's several ways that you could come up with some more money. One would be to increase the bed tax, and the other might be with short-term rentals. Each week, we see a large amount of outer towners travel into town. They start arriving on Thursday, and they stay through Sunday. While they are here, they put a demand on our city services such as the parks, the police, and the fire department. Using the fire department as an example, the fire department averages about 20 emergency calls a day. In recent weeks, starting on Thursdays, this car load has increased to 30 to 40 calls a day. They drop back on Sundays. When do the increase, where do the increases come from? They come from the visitors who fill the lake and channel and hotels and stores. In the day, the calls relate to the lake and the channel. At night, they relate to hotels, bars, restaurants, accidents, and medical issues. Recently, my wife and I, we traveled to Southern California. Once there, we paid a room rate, a resort rate, and a parking fee, something you expect to do if you travel. Some say if we raise the bed tax, they won't come. The hotels are full, the gas stations are full, and the restaurants are full and the bars are full. They will come. I have a family member in the food business here in town, works at a supermarket. They are averaging $90,000 to $120,000 a day. Last year, at the same time, they were getting $60,000 to $80,000 a day. While leaving town on my trip, I stopped at a fast-food restaurant. The shift manager was speaking to a friend. She said, he asked her how things were going. She said, "We are maxed out. I have 70 people on staff. We're dealing with 13, excuse me, 1,500 to 2,000 customers a day, especially on the weekends." The Sunday newspaper gave a report on the short-term rentals, 217% increase, we're ninth in the cities in the United States. They will come. If they do, they should be made to pay for the services they're using. I did. I paid a room rate, a resort tax, and $30 a night for self-parking. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, just for the record, short-term rentals are paying the bed tax that currently is there, just for the record. Would anyone else like to address the city council during the Call to the Public? All right, seeing none, we'll close the Call to the Public. Moving on to item six, the Consent Agenda. Do any members of the council want to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving to item seven, which is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. We'll start with item 7.1, which is Announce Vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are a number of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. This listing is those that are current and also upcoming. Airport Advisory Board, four regular pilot members, one regular non-pilot member, one alternate pilot member, one alternate non-pilot member. Board of Adjustment, four regular members, three alternate members. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, two regular members, one student member. Planning and Zoning Commission, one regular member and two alternate members. Applications can be picked up at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is the City Managers' Report. Mr. Knutson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The city rolled down the red carpet for our city council candidates with our All-Access Havasu event. Based on the feedback we received from the council candidates, the event was educational and successful. The candidates heard from each of the department directors on the city's operations and the city's services provided to our residents. Following this session, the candidates had an opportunity to tour the facilities and discuss infrastructure. I'd like to thank city clerk Kelly Williams and her team in the clerk's office, including Marcella and Shannon, for making this such a fun event, and I'd like to thank all the staff for their thoughtful and informative presentations. Lots of fun pictures. Mayor Cal Sheehy proclaimed June 15 as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Lake Havasu City, Arizona. You, along with City Council and Western Arizona Council Governments, Area Agency on Aging, recognize the importance of taking action to raise awareness and prevent and address elder abuse. We can all play a part to stop elder abuse, neglect, and exploitation. Mayor and Council, we have three 30-year employees I'd like to highlight this evening. Two of them will retire in July, and one plans to stick around a little longer. 30 years of service speaks volumes to the dedication of our employees towards our community. It reflects that the employees truly care about the community in which they live in, and they work hard to improve every day on the job. We're grateful to these three employees for all their hard work and commitment to the city. The first one is Donna Bess Carlton. She's worked for the Parks and Recreation Department for the past 30 years and plans to retire on July 1 in just a few weeks. Donna's journey began as a volunteer, eventually moving into part-time and then full-time through different positions within the city, including recreation volunteer, swim instructor, lifeguard, recreation leader, and lastly, as a supervisor. Donna is known for her giving nature and passion for the community. Donna was asked to provide a message, which reads, "Thank you for allowing me to be part of such a citywide awesome team, and for having the wisdom to always put our children first in our community. Lake Havasu raises great children." She deserves the very best in her retirement, and we will definitely miss her. Alberto Davalos has been with the city for the past 30 years as well, working tirelessly in both the Parks and Recreation Department and the Public Works Department, and he plans to retire on July 10. Alberto's message to the council is, "I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the city and each one of you for letting me be a part of this community. Working for Lake Havasu has provided many great challenges and opportunities while learning a lot along the way. Overall, it's been a wonderful experience to be part of Lake Havasu for more than three decades, with the highlight being the good fortune of working with such a talented team. We are sad to see Alberto and his many years of experience leave us, but we are also very happy for him and wish him well in his retirement." Our third employee is Tony Rubella. Tony Rubella has served in the fire department for the past 30 years as well. He started in the Fire Academy in November 1987 during his senior year at Lake Havasu High School. He became a paid-on-call firefighter in March of 1988, and was hired full-time in April of 1990. Tony plans to stick around a little while longer until he retires in December of 2021. He liked to voice these words, which are, "The closer I get to wrapping up my career, the more I realize what an honor and privilege it is to serve our community and to wear the uniform of the Lake Havasu City Fire Department." So Tony's words were, "The closer I get to wrapping up my career, the more I realize what an honor and privilege it is to serve our community and wear the uniform of the Lake Havasu City Fire Department." Thank you, Jess, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Tony, you're stuck with us for a few more months, and we're grateful that we can all benefit from your expertise and leadership a little while longer. And lastly, following COVID-19 case increases and hospitalizations in Arizona, Governor Doug Ducey announced enhanced actions to contain the spread of the virus and protect Arizona's most vulnerable residents, including authorizing cities, towns, and counties the ability to require the use of face masks. At this time, the city is strongly encouraging citizens and visitors to wear face coverings when they cannot physically distance themselves from others. This is a very fluid situation, and should the need arise, the city will review this position. We also strongly encourage everyone to respect those that make the decision to wear a face covering, regardless if you feel that's the best approach for yourself. Please, respect the decisions of others. In addition, the city is working with the business community through the Chamber of Commerce, asking businesses to redouble their efforts to ensure that they are using protocols to protect our citizens and their employees. We also strongly encourage citizens and visitors to continue to practice healthy habits to slow the spread of COVID-19 by washing your hands regularly, covering your cough and sneeze, staying at home if you're sick, practicing physical distancing when possible, and wearing a face covering when the opportunity arises and you cannot physically distance yourself from others. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Knutson. We'll now move on to item eight on the public hearings. We'll start with item 8.1, which is a Class B Bingo License Transfer of Location for Veterans of Foreign Wars, the VFW Post Number 6306. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Mr. Gerald Anger has applied for a transfer of location for a Class B Bingo License for Veterans of Foreign Wars, VFW Post Number 6306, from 12858 Oatman-Topac Road, Route 66, Topac, Arizona to 5601 Highway 95. This application was reviewed internally, and no objections were received. Staff recommends approval of this application. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant was also invited to join today to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, before I go back over to the other chair, could you, this is the first one we're doing like this, could you maybe explain that to the council and the citizens?
So this application for a transfer is similar to an application for a new Bingo License application, although the applicant does not have to go through the, submitting the entire application, they just have to go to the local governing body to request recommendation of approval or disapproval to transfer their current Class B Bingo License to a new location. So before council, it's just their request and their application that would require council to recommend approval or disapproval.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Do any other members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams? All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Revenue approve a Class B Bingo License Transfer of Location for the Veterans of Foreign Wars, VFW, Post Number 6306 to 5601 Highway 95, The Shops at Lake Havasu.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Groth. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. So we knew we were gonna have some issues with the microphone, so that's why we ran for a minute, but it only takes 30 seconds to reset, so you might see us do it a few times this evening because we do have a long agenda, but we do have a new system that's on its way. All right, moving on to item 8.2 is Adopt Resolution Number 20-3414, Appointing Regular Members to the Lake Havasu City Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received 10 applications requesting consideration for appointment as regular members to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. These appointments are necessary to fill the upcoming vacancies of two regular member positions. The applications received today were provided to you. Some were in the council packet, and some were received before the deadline, so those were provided to you. So I'll read the applicants' names. For Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the applicants were Todd Taylor, Mark Zeif, Christopher Gallagher, William Cooper, Alan Katz, Marcus Kelly, Dale Ross, Bree Carlin, Nathan Smith, and Charles Weldy. And provided to you also was a cover sheet that some of the applicants today are attending in person and others are on Zoom. Happy to answer any questions, and they were invited to answer any questions and also provide a brief introduction to the council.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Do any members have any questions for Ms. Williams? So if you do want to turn your monitor over, you can see the Zoom feed on our screens in front of us, and they'll be on the screen behind us for those in the audience. So we'll just go down the list as Ms. Williams presented the list and ask if the applicants would like to say a few words. So we'll start with Todd Taylor. If you could make your way to the podium and just tell us about why you want to join the board, just a short introduction to the council. And you will have to, there's a center button on that microphone panel if you could just hit it. Yes?
All right. Well, my name's Todd Taylor. I've been a full-time resident of Lake Havasu for a bit over 20 years, part-time resident for 12 years before that. I've been pretty active with the city and kids and things like that. I was one of the founders and still the vice president of the Snell Memorial Sports Park. And I just think the parks and recs and activities for the kids and the citizens of Lake Havasu is extremely important. I also use some of the city resources for my company, Joker's Wild Productions. We do a lot of events in Lake Havasu, so I have a vested interest in making sure that the infrastructure and the parks and such of Lake Havasu are maintained and up to par.
Excellent. Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Todd? All right. Thank you. All right, Mark Zeif? Yeah, please, if you'd like to give us an introduction, you're looking for a reappointment, so.
Yes, my name's Mark Zeif. I've been on the board for a little over three years, and I just want to thank you all. What an honor, what a great, great way to support the community, and I just want to say thank you. And also, please, may I serve again on another term, because we're excited about a lot of things we've got going on for the Parks and Rec. And as you guys might know, I bring a lot of enthusiasm, good energy, and reason to the table, and I try and keep things going along with the rules and regulations of the boards, which is nice. So I'll keep it short. We have a lot of guests to speak tonight, so I'm pleased asking you for your vote. Thank you so much.
Do any members of the council have any questions for Mark? All right. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to Zoom on the screen, Chris Gallega? I'm sorry.
That's all right. Gallagher.
Gallagher, thank you.
Gallagher, that's fine. A lot of people make that confusion. I'm joining you from London Bridge Park, which I thought I'd just give you a nice view of the beautiful renovated basketball court. I spent a lot of my time, I introduced myself to the board last time, so I'll be brief and just say all of that, and I spend a lot of my time in the parks. That's where I want to be when I'm not stuck in a school kitchen. And so I bring a personal perspective of the use of the park and want to help the city maintain and grow and improve them, and especially, as another speaker noted, in this time where we're having to be outside more and more, it's going to take a lot of creativity to make sure they're utilized and utilized safely, and I think I can help with that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Christopher. We appreciate you applying. Next applicant is William Cooper, which I believe is welcome.
Hi, my name's William Cooper. I'm a retired Marine. I'm also a retired Texas state trooper. I've lived here for about two years. I find myself with a lot of time on my hands the last couple of years, so I'm just looking to get involved in the community and help out with the Parks and Recreation.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for William? Great. Thank you for applying. All right, next applicant is Alan Katz, and I don't believe Alan was able to join us. No, okay. But his application is in the packet that Ms. Williams provided us. And also, there was an email that he was unable to attend this evening. Next applicant is Marcus Kelly, and Marcus is on Zoom. Hi, Marcus.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. My name is Marcus Kelly, licensed attorney. Been living in Arizona most of the time since nineteen eighty. Moved out to Lake Havasu City about a year ago, and have been doing my best to be integrated to the community and be a contributing member. My children are currently at the Aquatic Center. Also, you know, I'm a boat owner. I've used Site Six multiple times. My son also participates in the Lake Havasu City Chiefs. I'm a board member on the Chiefs. I'm also a board member on a charter school, so I have board experience. I understand that boards are supposed to sort of give broad directives at the fifty thousand foot level, and we expect the directors or the officers to do the day-to-day, you know, carrying out of those directives. So I've worked at all levels of government pretty much except for city. I've done time on the Hill. I have worked for the Arizona Senate, the Attorney General's Office, currently a La Paz County prosecutor. So city's just about the only area of government or level of government I haven't participated in, participated in or had experience with all three branches, executive, legislative, and judicial. And I would just ask the council to support me for a position on the Parks and Rec Board. I'd like to serve the citizens, learn more about Lake Havasu, and ask for your vote. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Marcus. Do any members of the council have any questions for Marcus? All right, we'll move on to Dale Ross. Mr. Ross?
Your Honor, council members, thanks for the opportunity to interview for Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. During my three-plus years here as a full-time resident in Lake Havasu, upon my retirement from the federal government, it's been gratifying to see the commitment of my new community towards recreational opportunities for both residents and visitors. Large enhancements such as the spectacular Cypress Park and smaller meaningful projects such as playground repairs show me that I want to be involved in these discussions in the future. Further, as a substitute teacher for the last three years with the school district, I've learned a great deal about the kids of Havasu and their recreational interests, personal watercraft, mountain biking, et cetera. My priorities would be expansion of bike paths wherever possible and greater opportunities for our handicap residents, despite what might be a challenging fiscal environment in the future. Thank you. Ready for any other questions?
Thank you. Any questions of the council, Dale? All right, thank you. All right, next applicant is Bree Carlin, and I, Bree's on Zoom. Welcome. Oh, Bree, if you could unmute maybe on your end. Okay, there you are.
There we go.
Yes.
Good evening. Thank you all so much for having me tonight. I've been a resident of Lake Havasu City for almost thirty years now. I grew up utilizing Parks and Recreation programs. I have a young child who goes through the after-school care program. My entire adult life has been dedicated to children, whether it's through teaching or volunteering through Girl Scouts, working at camps. So Parks and Recreation is really important to me, and I'm really passionate about it. So I would be excited for the opportunity to offer some support and input to the staff at Parks and Recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Bree? All right. Next is Nathan Smith. Nathan is joining us on Zoom. Hi, Nathan.
Hello, how you doing? My name's Nathan Smith. I'm thirty-three years old. I grew up in Lake Havasu my whole life as a kid. And I was actually, I'm still an avid skateboarder at the Snell Memorial Skate Park. And I have been my whole life. I actually grew up there when I was a young kid skating there. Back in Markali, I remember was helping out with everything and all you guys to bring the skate park here. I mean, I was one of those kids skateboarding there, and I still go there till this day, probably I'd say once a week. But I know the kids down there. I know that's not just, that's just the asset of the program. But, you know, I have a master's degree in information management. I'm in IT, computers, and very passionate about this type of stuff, and I think I have a lot to offer, very innovative. You know, even if I don't get the position, I would like to see more events and stuff, not only, you know, at the skate park. I know you guys do a great job of what you got going on right now, but, you know, I would like to, I think I have some some things, some ideas for the youth in this town, you know, and I think I could really help out on the team. So I'm just happy that you guys look over my application, and I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you, Nathan. Thank you for applying. And then our final applicant this evening is Charles Weldy, which I believe Charles is with us in person this evening.
All right. Hey, thanks for hearing me out. My name is Charles Weldy. I'm a PE teacher at the high school, and I also coach football at Lake Havasu. This is my first year coaching up there. Moved here from Illinois. I was a GM of a professional indoor football team in Bloomington, Normal, Illinois. Worked very closely with Parks and Rec because we put a lot of projects together. We did a lot of free camps for kids with our, we had a lot of professional players. Come work out with the kids and do free camps for them in the summer, things like that. Before that, I worked as an adjunct professor in Oklahoma City Community College. I taught freshman health, that's college freshmen, not high school freshmen, health and wellness. So really focused on the importance of sustainable life choices and how important getting out of the house and exercise and things like that. As you guys probably know, childhood obesity, breast cancer, diabetes, big reasons we're seeing jumps in these things are the lack of exercise, right? Kids want to stay home and play Xbox, the air conditioning. So getting kids outside, getting them more involved, and adults as well, getting them more active, giving them things to do. The other thing I taught at Oklahoma City Community College was leisure management services. This is for students who wanted to matriculate and become either maybe a park ranger or administrative positions in Parks and Rec. So I worked with people that wanted to work their way up into that department and really focused on how your proximity to a park can change the value of your life. It really adds value to your life. The closer you live, there's numbers about how it's less stress and how your kids are more active and how a lot of the diseases that are tied to a lack of activity are less prevalent. So for those reasons, I was interested in being involved with Parks and Rec here. I've lived in Havasu for just a year now, so we're pretty new. I see a lot of other candidates. I've been here for a long time, but I felt like my specific skills played in pretty well. So it's nice to meet you all and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Charles. Do any members of the council have any questions for Charles? All right. That concludes the list of our applicants, but I will say that I am so proud of all of the applicants we have. We have such vast experience that applied this round. It's amazing with the experience. Thank you for stepping up and getting involved in your community. With that being said, we have great candidates, but we'll have two spots that are available right now. We have, of the applicants, Mark Zief is currently on the board looking for a reappointment, and then Christopher Gallega is a person that applied prior, and then we kept the application on file, and he still has an interest. So do any members of the council have any questions before we open the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Lane?
Not a question. I just want to echo your statement. I'm absolutely amazed and really proud of the people in this city stepping up like this. I've never seen so many applicants to sit on a committee or a board, and unfortunately, there's only a couple of positions for all these great applicants. But what I would like to say is, even if you're not chosen, please be involved anyway. You can still attend the meetings and still have a voice. So, thank you.
And we now have your name, and so we'll be calling when someone else is. Any other comments from council before we open up the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McCoy? Yes.
Motion, please. I move to adopt Resolution Number two-oh-three-four-one-four, Appointing Christopher Gallagher and Todd Taylor as regular members to the Lake Havasu City Park and Recreation Advisory Board with terms ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, and I just want to echo what they said. Thank you all so much for being a part of this, and please, continue to be involved.
All right, do we have a motion? Second? Second. All right, we have a motion from Councilmember McCoy and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none. If you change your screen over, we will vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Yes, and thank you again to all the applicants. Fantastic, and we will keep your applications on file. And when a vacancy occurs, the city clerk's office will reach out to you, and we hope that you will still volunteer and be involved. So, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is item eight point three, Adopt Resolution Number two-zero-three-four-one-five, Appointing Regular and Alternate Members to the Lake Havasu City Airport Advisory Board. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received five applications requesting consideration for appointment as regular pilot and non-pilot members and alternate pilot and non-pilot members. These appointments are necessary to fill the upcoming vacancies for regular pilot members, one regular non-pilot member, one alternate pilot member, and one alternate non-pilot member. The applications were provided to you in the packet, and those that were received after were also provided to you today. The applicants for the Airport Advisory Board are Brian Schultz, Terrence Concanon, Mark Taylor, Glenn Patterson, Katrin Phillips, and Tony Castlefort. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any initial questions for Ms. Williams? All right, we'll do the same for this advisory board as well. We'll just go down in the order that Ms. Williams mentioned. So Brian Schultz for reappointment. Brian, if you'd like to share a few words with the council?
Good evening. I believe I've served on the board for three years. It's been a lot of fun, been an honor, learned a lot. I am the local AOPA ASM, which is the airport service volunteer. I also am the local FAA Designated Pilot Examiner, Flight Instructor. I have a flight school out there as well. Probably spend about more time, maybe equal to about Glenn, who's also up at the airport, probably twelve, fourteen hours a day. So pretty good feel what's going on out there. Fly a lot. Just definitely want to keep giving back to the aviation community here and watch it grow and prosper.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, Terrence Concanon?
Mayor Sheehan, City Council, city staff, thank you for having me. You may know, but everybody may not know that I'm Terrence Concanon. I'm the president and CEO of Go Lake Havasu, your tourism bureau. We're also working currently on a sustainable, hopefully, a sustainable commercial air service into the city. Now, having said that, I can continue to work with the airport and with Damon on this particular initiative without being on this board. So if there are concerned citizens that would like to be on this board and you feel that they can contribute, then I would most certainly encourage you to do that. Having said that, I appreciate your concern for me being on this board.
Thank you, Terrence. The next person on the list would be Mark Taylor, who is unable to attend today, but there is a letter in your packet. Are we back on? All right, and then the next person after Mark Taylor, who again was unable to attend, but there is an application and information in our packet. Next is Glenn Patterson.
Mayor Sheehan, City Council members, thank you for having us tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to be considered for a regular position on the Lake Havasu Municipal Airport Advisory Board. As a professional pilot working full-time here at the airport and a flight school owner, I can only say I'm very excited to be a part of the airport as a user and a tenant. Our airport manager, Mr. Anderson, has, in my opinion, done a great job to communicate and articulate the airport master plan to us as airport users. I would like to represent the general aviation pilots here on the field and help them, or rather, help their voices be heard to our airport manager and to our city council so that we can continue to build upon the physical health and prosperity of our airport so all citizens of Lake Havasu City can benefit from and continue to use our local airport. Lake Havasu is growing, and our infrastructure needs at the airport will continue to grow along with the city. I believe my thirty-year experience in aviation and business management will be an asset to the advisory board, and I would be honored to serve if appointed by the council. I appreciate the consideration and welcome any questions you might have.
Excellent. Thank you, Glenn. Do any members have any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next is Katrin Phillips.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Katrin Phillips. I'm a little over two-year resident, a full-time resident of Havasu. Twenty-three years of aviation, technically since day one, since both my parents were in aviation. But yeah, twenty-three years in aviation, eighteen of which on the commercial side, five of which on the general aviation side. My initial first home airport, so to speak, is Frankfurt, Germany. But I've had the pleasure of doing airport operation in Middle East, Africa, Virginia, JFK. So just a few places you may have heard of. Aviation is, I have jet A running through my veins, and I do believe in no plane, no game. So I truly enjoy our little airport that we have. While I'm not a pilot myself, but I participate in every aviation event, and I would like to see the airport, as I put in my application, an airport tends to bring a lot more business than just in the footprint of the airport itself. And sometimes the non-aviation public needs a little friendly reminder of the great ways that an airport can contribute. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, do any members have any questions for Katrin?
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Groat?
I just want to say that your background is really extraordinary. I was blown away when I was reading that. You have a lot of experience at Dulles Airport, named after the great Allen Dulles, who we all know was the first civilian director of the CIA.
I would say John Foster Dulles, but okay.
Okay, John Foster Dulles. I like Allen.
I like to test.
But I really wanted to know your experience inside and outside the Beltway. All funding for the things that we do at our airport and basically every airport in the United States is going to come from one source. It's going to come from the FAA for the most part. I'm not really aware of any other major funding sources that people can rely on. Can you give me an idea how your experience inside and outside the Beltway could be useful in working with our airport and the incredible funding opportunities that we do have with the Federal Aviation Administration?
Certainly. Thank you for that. One thing, and I was happy to hear that we're looking at maybe bringing a commercial service here. I was quite impressed with the ingenuity that Baltimore Airport BWI would adapt to bring in international business. They made quite some interesting arrangements with international carriers. Now, I think we're not quite in the range of international business, but I think on the commercial aviation side, it is interesting to work with the airlines directly to see what appeals to them and use their funding sources for the benefit of the airport.
Do you have any experience with air cargo, just out of curiosity?
With what, sorry?
Air cargo.
My very early days in Frankfurt, but heading in well.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, moving on to our final applicant is Tony Castlefort, which is joining us via Zoom. Welcome, Tony.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor. Talking to you today from Dallas-Fort Worth Airport. I'm here doing my recurrent on the Gulfstream four-fifty, five-fifty, and then I'm also an instructor and an examiner on those two international jets. on those two international jets. 30 years as a pilot and aviation entrepreneur, and I've had such a great career, but what I want to do is I wanted to go ahead and see if there's anything that we could do together as a board, as a city, as a community, to try to continue to work with Damon, to make the airport self-sustaining. And there's a lot of things that I've heard about, I've met with Damon, I met with you, Mayor, one time about scheduled air carrier service in the Lake Havasu and back out again. There's a couple of things in the works that I think are exciting, but there's also the potential for more hangar rate and more opportunities for fuel sales, so in my opinion, all of this, all of the people that have spoken to you today that are interested in joining the Airport Advisory Board, I think every single one of us could potentially contribute to that end and make the airport self-sustaining, so I'd like an opportunity to go ahead and have a voice directly with the board, represent the board to the community. I do have one question for the people sitting in the round there. I'm not 100% clear on exactly what the aircraft and Airport Advisory Board's function is, because I wasn't sure if they're, I don't know what, exactly what they are. Are they a liaison to the general public? Or do they represent the public and bring the public's interest to the City Council? But if anybody could answer that for me, it would help me to understand exactly what might be expected of me, should I be selected to help, again, Damon and the city of Lake Havasu to not just secure a scheduled air carrier service, but also to make the airport, like I said, self-sustaining somehow.
Yeah, great, thank you for the question. Jim, Councilmember Jim Dolan is the council liaison for the Airport Advisory Board, and will answer that question.
All righty. Yeah, I've been on the Airport Advisory Board for about a year and a half, learned a lot. I think your question brings up a good point. I struggled with that in the beginning, a little bit of a, if you just look at the word Airport Advisory Board, you'd think we advise the airport, but it's, to me, it's a little vague. According to the city ordinance, it's an Airport Advisory Board to the council, so it's a little more big-picture items such as future growth, proposed land use, budgeting review. There are a lot of discussions we can have at that level. We've just, in my opinion in the past, maybe we haven't stuck to, I guess the thing we have to remember is we, because we are a board under, appointed by the council, we are bound by open meeting laws, so we have to abide by that. We have to agenda these items in order to talk about it, much like when the city manager gives his update, it's informative, we can ask a simple question, but we can't go off topic and go into detail on it, much like when Damon gives his update on the airport. You know, it's mainly for information, we need to be careful that we delve into that area because we don't want to violate open meeting laws, so. But yes, there is more that we, you know, it's an advisory board to the council on a little more big-picture stuff, it's not to the airport manager. But with that, there's a lot we can do as long as we have a plan and an idea and how we want to go about it, and we make sure, like I said, we abide by open meeting laws and make sure we let the public know we're going to be discussing it prior to, you know, putting it on an agenda, so if that helps answer the question.
It does help, and when I first, okay, so I was the announcer for the water ski shows here 38 years ago, before there was an English Village, and I skied with all the people that you guys, maybe if you've lived there long enough that you remember, the Bobby Armstrongs, the Pat McCormick retired firefighters, Jim Hoover, who started the vendor service down there with Jet Ski Rentals at the Nautical Inn, and all these different things. And when I came back here, after they moved the airport from the island over to the new facility that we have, I couldn't believe what a beautiful facility is. The planning and the vision that it took to build such a nice terminal, and the way the ramp is set up for the flow of traffic as an airplane would taxi in, drop passengers, reload, and then depart again. The idea here is, again, to make it self-sustaining, so I would just like to be involved directly at the forefront, if possible, on the advisory board, to try to see some of these things through. And as a captain, an international captain, and then also as an entrepreneur that's always owned my own companies, I'm not, I'm going to tell you straight up, I'm not real great at the patience it takes to be a bureaucrat, but I can tell you this, I will sit patiently and watch and listen to every piece of input that there is that we might see in review as a board member, but I really do want to try to see if we can build some more hangars and sell more fuel, and maybe sell some airplanes locally to the local people that maybe want to get their private pilot certificate, maybe have to upgrade to their ATP or their commercial. But I, again, I want to give back, I'm retired, and I'm still teaching out here in Dallas on the Gulfstreams and on the citations as well. And so while I'm in Havasu, which is pretty much almost all year long, other than three or four times a year I come out here to teach, I'd like to help out in any way I can. Thank you for hearing me, and I'm sorry it took so long.
Thank you. All right, so those are the applicants. Again, fantastic applicants with great resumes and great experience, I'm so proud of all the citizens that have applied for this. For the council, this one's a little bit easier for us because we do have a position for all of the applicants in some way, we just have to put it together, so. Do any members of the council have anything that they'd like to add or any questions before we open up the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Yeah, you want to just hit the microphone? Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I think I'll try to piece this together with what we have in front of us. I move to adopt Resolution Number 20-3415, Appointing Brian Schultz, Mark Taylor, Glenn Patterson, and Tony Castleport as regular pilot members, and Terrence Concanon as a regular non-pilot member, and Katrin Phillips as an alternate non-pilot member to the Airport Advisory Board with term ending June 30, 2023.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? All right, we are ready to vote. We're getting there, it's the, technology gets in the way sometimes. All right.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, and thank you to all the applicants. Again, amazing experience, it's going to really do some great things for our airport, so congratulations to all of you, and thank you for being involved.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to Item 8.4 is Adopt Resolution Number 20-3419, Appointing Regular and Alternate Members to the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, the city received five applications requesting consideration as regular and alternate members to the Planning and Zoning Commission. These, there are currently one regular and two alternate vacancies. The applications were provided to you in your packet, and we also received applications that were provided to you today. The applications are Susannah Ballard, Doug Hardy, Sam Levin, Larry Heller, and Gabrielle Medley-Harry. Happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams? All right, we'll do this the same way then. We'll go down in the order that Ms. Williams called it, so we'll start with you, Susannah Ballard. Suzanne, if you could just hit that center button on the microphone console. Thank you, yes.
All right, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. I am currently, am just completing my first term as an alternate on planning and zoning. That's a duty I've enjoyed very much. I'm looking for an opportunity for a reappointment. It's a little bit of a learning curve, but it's a very exciting learning curve. Some planning and zoning is something I'm very interested in. My background is banking, finance, and commercial real estate, so it kind of fits into my bailiwick a little bit, so I'm looking for your support. I appreciate your support in the past, hope you'll support me this time around. Thank you.
Thank you. The next applicant is Doug Hardy, who is looking for a reappointment, currently serves on planning and zoning but was unable to attend. His information is in the packet along with his inability to be here this evening. The next applicant is Sam Levin, and Sam is here. Sam, if you could just make your way to the podium? Yeah, please. Oh, you just turned it off. Perfect, all right.
It's good?
Yeah, it's good, thank you.
Hi, everyone. I just, I saw that you needed people to help, so I have a lot of experience in real estate in Utah, and I thought I'd see if I could help, maybe learn a little bit more about the area.
Excellent. Do any members of the council have any questions for Sam? All right, well, thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Our next applicant is Larry Heller. And Larry, I understand, is here in person? Is not in person. All right, and then Larry's information is in our packet as well. And then Gabrielle Medley-Harry, which I believe is with us on Zoom. No, she's not really with us on Zoom, yeah. Was planning to be with us on Zoom. All right, so we, but Gabrielle's information is with our packet as well. All right, do any members, again, now on this one, we have great applicants as well with great experience in planning, land, zoning issues, but we're here this evening to appoint one regular member and two alternate members to the commission. Do any members of the council have any questions or comments before we open up the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
I have a question for Kelly.
So Suzanne was the only one that volunteered to be an alternate member, everybody else, they didn't check alternate, we can't make them an alternate?
Just, my question was, if someone didn't choose to be an alternate, can we still make them an alternate?
What they requested on the application, I think we would need to ask the applicant if they were interested in an alternate position. They indicate on there whether they're interested in that regular or alternate, or they can choose to check both boxes if they're interested in either.
All right, it's kind of awkward. We know that the folks in the room can hear us, but the folks that are watching at home can't hear with this, passing the microphone, so thank you for putting up with our awkwardness. It'll be changing soon. Any other questions or comments? Entertained a motion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 20-3419, Appointing Doug Hardy as a regular member to the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission with the term ending June 30, 2023, and Susannah Ballard and Sam Levin as alternate members to Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission with the term ending June 30, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we are ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Great, thank you. And again, thank you to all the applicants, and for the applicants that were not selected this evening, we will keep the information on file and we'll reach out to them should it need arise, which a need always arises, so we'll be calling. So, thank you very much and congratulations. All right, moving on to Item 8.5 is Adopt Resolution Number 20-3416, Amending Resolution Number 19-3319, Transferring Budget Appropriations From One Fund, Department, or Division to Another for Fiscal Year 2019-20. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. This item is for the current year's budget fiscal year 1920. We are proposing amendments within the budget, but we were just moving the dollars around within the budget, the budget total doesn't change, the applications don't change in total. We're just moving the dollars around into the appropriate places. The majority of the costs that are being included for the amendment are when we did the departmental reorganizations, putting parks maintenance under parks and recreation, and so we moved that from Public Works. And then we also had some development services funding that needed to shift to Public Works, so this is just moving those dollars around, getting them into the right place, kind of a cleanup resolution for the current fiscal year. And staff would recommend approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Do any members of the council have any questions? Yes, this is just end-of-the-year routine business, making sure it's in the right accounts. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Motion?
Yes, Councilmember Groth?
Move to adopt Resolution Number 20-3416, Approving the Budget Amendments Listed on amended schedules E and F for fiscal year 2019-20.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Groth and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.6 is the Truth in Taxation Hearing and Public Hearing on the Proposed Fiscal Year 2020-21 Property Tax Levy. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is the item that is part of the culmination of the budget process. Tonight is the required truth in taxation hearings so that the public can provide input, anything that they want to share with the council related to the property tax levy that is proposed for the next fiscal year, 2021. Staff is proposing to leave the property tax rate the same as it is this year. Therefore, we would receive additional revenue for any increases in assessed valuation and new construction. And with that, I recommend holding the, opening up the hearing and then approving this item, please.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Olson? All right, again, this is adopting the property tax levy for the upcoming fiscal year, which we are, and the current proposal is leaving it flat, and it's been flat for about four years now. Three years? This is, I think, our fourth budget. Three, okay. So, all right, any other comments or questions before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Yes, Councilmember McCoy?
I move to approve the levy of the proposed fiscal year 2020 to 2021 property tax, and to accept the levy at the July 14, 2020 City Council meeting. Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember McCoy and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right. So you all are in for a real treat tonight. We are going to go to a special meeting that's going to happen. So item 8.7 is adjourned to a special meeting. If we could have a motion? We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is it a public hearing too? No. Okay. So we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
And we're there. In the special meeting. So we can conduct item 8.8. This is all done by statute as part of the budget process. So the budget process is culminated over many, 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 many months, but this is the final adoption. So item 8.8 is adopt resolution number 20-3417, adopting the fiscal year 2020-21 final budget. Ms. Olson.
Thank you again, Mayor. This, again, as you've seen before, is a recap of the budget process. We've had several meetings providing discussion of the overall budget at the council retreat in February. Council discussed the ongoing structural deficit and the need for potential new revenues and provided direction to staff to present revenue options in several tax categories during those budget workshops that we had in May, and then for staff to focus on core city services and current projects as opposed to adding additional new projects to the budget this year. So we reviewed the department budgets with the city manager, all of the submissions that came from each of the departments related to their requests and their needs. During the internal review of the departmental budget with, whoops. Not sure what happened there. Okay, there we go. During that internal review, based upon the numbers we were seeing, we developed what we called and referred to as the Plan B items, which were to be considered further after we looked at the, kind of the mid-year numbers with the revenues being such a huge unknown during this pandemic and not really knowing what the true effects of the overall revenue, effects on that revenue was going to be. We created this plan so that we could monitor those revenues and should the revenues start coming in higher than we anticipated, we could consider the items on the Plan B list. At the two budget workshops in May, May 7th and 21st, council was provided information on the revenue projections and we discussed implementation potential for those Plan B items. On June 9th, council adopted the fully funded capital improvement plan and the tentative budget, which set the cap of the budget. The tentative budget did include the Plan B items with the additional revenues in the form of either revenue recovery and/or COVID reimbursements and/or grants to allow for the additional spending should the revenue show an increase over what was projected, just to give council more flexibility and the manager flexibility in, in operating that budget. Tonight, just before this, the hearing on the property tax levy was held, which again includes leaving the property tax rate the same, but applying it to an increase in AV or assessed valuation. And that resulted in additional revenue of approximately $300,000, including the new construction. On July 4th, council will adopt the final property tax rate or levy based upon what you heard during the taxation hearing for the property tax levy. The tentative budget is required to be published in the newspaper. And that is dictated by state law. So that was done on June 14th and June 21st. Council again can reduce the amount of the final budget, but we cannot increase the amount of final budget. No changes have been made to the budget since the tentative budget adoption on June 9th. And the total budget expenditures in the proposed final budget is just over $166 million. Again, just a reminder, as indicated earlier, you will be reviewing the property tax levy on July 14th. The proposed rates that are included in the 2021 final budget include the city property tax at the same rate with a levy amount that was a bit higher than last year. The ADD or irrigation training otherwise known as water fund also has an assessment that remains the same on a per acre basis. And then two small improvement districts, the, the rates for those are staying the same as well. And you can see the amount of revenue that we anticipate to generate through the adoption of those, those rates. With that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions the council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Do any members of the council have any questions? Councilmember Dolan?
I have a question for Jess. I know it's on everybody's mind, is the positional analysis and how it plays in. I know we got an update two weeks ago. Would you just give us a quick update on how we're doing and that progress and what timeframe we think we might still be able to hit or?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Dolan. Same update that I provided last time still remains true. So we're still on that, on that track. As Ms. Olson indicated, we bent back in March at the height of COVID and the unknowns of what the budget was going to look like. And we identified positional analysis, even though as a top priority that we're moving towards for the last two years, with the full expectation that we would adopt or move forward, implement the positional analysis, July 1st, 2020. At that time, identified as a Plan B item. Since then, we've identified some, some better news in terms of the economic impacts of the, of the city and the financial well-being. And we've been able to move that up until, and the update I gave to council was that August, September-ish timeframe. And that's, that's, that's still on track. There's some logistics in terms of how we input the findings in the study into the, into our program that generates paychecks and so forth. There's, there's a lot of logistics that are tied to that. So the, the goal here is to, to match up with the pay period sometime in August or September. And we're, we're on track for all that. Again, for positional analysis, what we're talking about here is market wage adjustments for all of our employees by position throughout the organization for the, for the goal and purpose of to attract and retain the best and brightest employees.
I just want to thank you for that extremely simple update because I know it's taking a lot more than that. It's a lot bigger, more than just, well, this person's at this pay level, or if someone's been here one year, two years, five years, 20 years, or they got promoted to another job, now are they going to make less than they did, you know? So there's a lot that goes into it. And like I said, especially on the Oracle side. I know it's quite the, the software beast to deal with. So I, I do appreciate your, your work in finance. I know it is, it's quite a lot to take on and it's like, it's a little bit more complex than we want to make it sound. But I do appreciate your hard work and still working towards that earlier deadline than we had hoped for. So thank you.
If I can appreciate the, the compliment, but all that goes to Shana Rula, our HR manager, who is the one that is working behind the scenes very, very hard. But I appreciate that. Thank you.
I think I said her name so quickly, you might not have heard it. So thank you, Shana.
Do any other members of the council have any questions or comments? No? All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council? Bob, you signed up for this item. So if you would want to make your way to the podium? And then just click that button in the center. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city manager. My name is Bob McMillan. I'm here to speak briefly about an item in the upcoming fire department budget, and that is the rehab rig. This van has been moved to the B budget, which means that it would not be funded until January of funded at all. I guess one might say this is a step in the right direction as this request has been completely kicked out of the past three budgets. As the budget session, at the budget session at the Islander Inn in February, I came prepared to make a report on this project. At that meeting, the interim fire chief was asked a question by a council person. She said, "Chief, is there any budget item that you would like to address at this time?" The question was not answered, and the council members heard a large sigh from the cert members present. First, I would like to ask you this question. How many of you people came to here tonight in a 1990 automobile? And if you did, how many of you rolled down the windows of your air, because your air conditioner didn't work? I feel not many of you did this. We are currently using a 1990 Chevrolet Step Van for rehab operations. This van in the past life has served as the hazmat support vehicle, the arson support van, before becoming the rehab van some 15 years ago. Each time, equipment has been removed, added, or jury rigged to fit the current need. Over the years, it has become tired and requires frequent repairs. Recently, the vehicle shops removed a ton of wiring and old radios in an attempt to solve an ongoing battery problem. This problem resulted in the van missing two working fires last summer, as well as several calls in previous years. In each case, the members had to take their private vehicles to Station 5, load the equipment, and respond to the fire, resulting in a major delay providing rehab to the firefighters, especially in the hot summer. In one case, the large fire at the refuge, they had to go to the vehicle shops where the van was up on a lift, climb up into the van to obtain the needed equipment, then respond to the fire where firefighters were found flaked out under the trees awaiting rehab. The doors and windows are very hard to open and close. The shifter is hard to shift in and out of gear. The air conditioning units are ineffective. The van leaks oil. We have to be careful to put down a drip pan if we operate on a private driveway at an incident, so we don't damage the driveway with an oil stain. The side awnings have become very hard to manage. One time when it was, would not retract, we returned to Station 5 with the awning tied up to the side of the rig with clothesline. Over the years, we have willingly spent our own funds to have the awnings repaired on two occasions and to buy items that have broke due to age and use, spending over $700. One quartz light was broken off and not replaced due to its age. The diamond plate flooring inside the cab works loose and becomes a tripping hazard. The built-in generator has an exhaust leakage problem and backfire problem. The current bottle racks are of unequal weight. One rack damages the outside of the bottle's covering. We recently had to replace a leg on one of the racks. As a result, I have taken it upon myself to research the cost of a new Step Van and who builds them. I found that Step Vans come in two flavors. A Freightliner at $82,000 and a diesel, with a diesel motor, and a Ford that has a gasoline engine at $63,000. This is before finishing the cab, the cargo area, and installing the necessary equipment. I have recommended the Ford version. I have been in contact with a number of truck builders who convert Step Vans into specialty type vehicles to meet our need. One was in Missouri, one in California. I dealt with the company in Missouri that had poor response and I stopped dealing with them. As a result, I reached out to a company in California. I was very impressed with the firm. They provided me with the information in three days, something I cannot say about the company in Missouri. The problem I ran into is they would not build the inside of the van to our needs. As a result, their costs were exceeding the money in the budget. For the price of the $63,000, you get a chassis, which is two large pieces of metal. You get a motor, a steering wheel, and six wheels, six tires. The chassis then has to go to a company who will build the cab, the outside walls, and the floor to our requirements. It then goes to a builder that will build the cargo space inside along with our equipment that we would transfer into the vehicle. We would continue to use the current battery tender, the fire department radio, and the large supply rack that we now have in the current vehicle. We took into consideration the space to park the vehicle in Station 5 in addition to the interior space needed to hold all our necessary equipment. One particular model of the Ford is the Ford F-59, which meets our needs. Currently, the city shops is researching a bid on this chassis. I'm working with a company in Michigan who will take the chassis and construct the cab and cargo area to our needs. I am also working with a local body shop here in town who is interested in building the interior to meet our needs. All this takes time. We're not asking for a super vehicle that many police and fire departments have. We're asking for your approval of a simple new Step Van that built to our specifications will serve the department for many years. The National Fire Protection Association has strict guidelines requiring the rehabbing of firefighters, both during the summer and winter months. We strictly abide by these rules in performing our job, keeping the firefighters healthy and safe. This van is not only used for the fire department. We have rehabbed the police SWAT team on a number of occasions. We have rehabbed city workers for 12 hours several years ago in the summer when a major water pipe broke and needed immediately replacement. We rehabbed the civilians attending the Hangar 24 airshow last year when it became very hot. Most recently, we assisted at the Quest Laboratory when they came to town for the coronavirus testing. We were the only local group to show up at Saturday morning at 4:00 AM to assist the lab personnel. The nine testing members dressed in their PPP outfits soon found a loved for the cert team cold towels, snacks, and ice water, as when the sun came up, it became very hot. Besides rehabbing the members, we handled all the traffic control at this operation in which 377 civilians participated. So you can say this vehicle is a community vehicle. This past week, we responded to a, to the first hot summer fire. The fire was not very big, so it never made it to the newspaper. But the rehab unit provided a key element in the operation when called upon to use the generator to supply power to an electric fan that was needed to expel the smoke and fumes. Truck one, the ladder truck, who normally handles this at a fire, was at another incident. In closing, if this vehicle stays in the B budget, I feel we would never see it before a year or more. If then, we need it now. If I can answer any questions, I would be pleased to do so. If not, thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, Bob. And for those that are watching at home in the audience, all of that that Bob just said and the rest of the green shirts that are here today and the many that aren't, they do all of this as volunteers. So the, the cost that they save the city and the citizens is amazing. And we appreciate all the work that you guys do for us. So everything you detailed in your letter, you're doing that as a volunteer and it's unbelievable. So thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Bob? No? All right.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to speak to the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Groth?
I have a motion, but before I drop the motion out, I just want to say that we do have some flexibility in A and B. It is pretty outrageous that our cert team has to deal with this. And I know that the customizations that are required take somewhere in the order of six months. I would hope that when we get down to the brass tacks in a $166 million budget, we might be able to find a way to split those two pieces up so that we can look at getting the vehicle ordered. And then maybe under B, we can have it brought up to speed. Probably that fits in with a normal timeline. And, and then we would at least have that when the heat comes next year at this time, which is the time when our citizens and our cert workers are most vulnerable and our firefighters too. That said, it would be very difficult at this point to modify the budget, although I'm sure that probably in there with some sharp pencils, it can be done. And so I'm going to put the motion on the table, given all the work that we have done, all the agreements we have made and the adjustments and so forth. So I will make the motion. I will move to adopt resolution number 20-3417, adopting the fiscal year 2020-21 budget in the amount of $166 million, $303,236.
A second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Groth and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question. Just a clarification for the B option. Is there something we can pull the trigger when we, we as the council feel we are comfortable with the tax revenue coming in and all that? Just to clarify to the people at home?
Yeah. So as a, just as a reminder, sometimes we, we've been working on this so long, this budget, and we've said these things over and over and over again. So sometimes we forget to when we're right at the, the end to recap it. But within this budget, if you were to look at it, what we did in the previous meeting is we set the, the cap. We couldn't make the budget number be any larger. Today is the final adoption. But there's about $15 million in, in unknowns, Plan B, COVID-related stuff. And that's because we, we don't have the impacts of grants, federal funding, CARES Act money. We're starting to get some clarity on that, but we weren't when Justin and his team were putting this together mid-March and into April. So yeah, there is some flexibility in, in all of this. Right now, it's just, it's important to remind us, certainly as the council, our, our job is obviously to pass a budget. We are now in June and we still don't have the sales tax numbers for, from April, May, when we were closed. And, and we're pretty much funded by sales tax. The, one of the slides that Ms. Olson put up shows about a $5.8 million property tax and a $5.7 million ADD. We just have a motion on the table right now for $166 million. And those property tax levies, that's 10 million. So, so a sales tax is a huge component of what we do. And so until we have some certainty in what those sales tax numbers look like, we've already asked, asked Justin and his team to make sure that the positional analysis was moved up and they were able to make some adjustments on, on that because of the priority. We understand this is a priority. We understand this is a priority. We talked about this item at, as far as the cert vehicle, at the council planning session. And as soon as we have some clarity on what those sales tax numbers look like, there's certain, there's a lot of flexibility for us to be able to do it. It'll come before council again because in this particular item, it's going to be over $50,000. But Jess, I don't know if you want to add any additional?
No, I think that's a very, very good explanation, Mayor. And when it comes down to, we have a budget that identifies what we want to accomplish over the next 12 months. This is one of the projects that we want to, that we want, we want to purchase a vehicle for the cert team. And that's something that we're able to get in the budget. And so that's the plan. That's how we're moving forward. You know, just the uncertainty has how we move forward in these times when we wasn't, a couple of months ago when bars and restaurants and local businesses were closed and employees were laid off. If we can move forward in a way to avoid all of that chaos, then we'll be in good shape and be able to move forward with a lot of the good in this budget.
I just want to thank you for the clarification for also the people at home. Also, you know, keep in mind, people come to me, well, we're doing fine, like Havasu's doing great. Well, our budget, money also comes from our state shared revenue as well. So it's not just how Havasu property taxes are, it's at the state level. And not all of Arizona is firing on all cylinders like Havasu seems to be doing right now. So just like I said, just for information, just to keep that in mind. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Dolan. All right, we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We are ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Excellent, thank you. And thank you to Jill and I saw Angie on the call. Thank you for all your help, all the department heads. Thank you for all of your work, staff for going through. This is a long process, so thank you to each one of you. All right, so now we're not going to be so special anymore. So 8.9, we're going to reconvene back to our regular meeting, but I do need a motion to do that.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Coke to reconvene to our regular meeting, which is item 8.9 on this agenda, and we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item eight, 8.10. We haven't had one with double digits before. That's kind of hard to say. 8.10, approved change order to software implementation services agreement with N. Harris Computer Corporation for the North Star Customer Information System Software for Utility Billing. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this item is to request contingency funds from the wastewater utility fund and the water fund, the ADD. This change order will allow us to defer this project. We have started implementation, but due to how we are still trying to integrate all of the third-party software interfaces with the Oracle system, we don't have the city resources needed to complete those integrations in a timely manner. So we're going to have to delay the North Star implementation a bit, probably until January is what we're estimating for now. This delay does have a cost associated with it due to changes in upgrades and configurations and additional training support that we might need. And then, of course, making sure that we get the North Star team that dedicated product back on the implementation. So this order is to existing contract in the amount of $49,230 and staff would request approval of this item.
Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Olson on this item? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the change order to the Software Implementation Service Agreement with N. Harris Computer Corporation dated April 22, 2020 for the North Star Customer Information System Software for Utility Billing in the amount of $49,230 and to authorize the city manager to execute on behalf of the city.
Second, we have a motion from Councilmember McCoy and a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.11 is adopt ordinance number 20-1234, amending the zoning classification and district boundary for 4100 Arizona Boulevard, tract 2253, block 2, lot 1, from C1 Limited Commercial District to R2 Two-Family Residential District. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor and council members, thank you. This request, the property for this request is in the southeast part of town, off of Arizona Boulevard, just before you reach Highlander Avenue, come from South McCulloch. It's at the corner of Arizona Boulevard and Sandy Drive right here. The current zoning is for C1 Commercial. The request is to rezone it to R2 Two-Family Residential. There are, this C2 node is one of a few in town that are scattered around the area. And these nodes of C1 are slowly being transitioning over to residential. An example of one that almost transitioned is at North Calaberry and Bentley Boulevard, the north side of town, and then over at Kiowa and Bison Boulevard that were originally C1 and they've been transitioning over to residential. This was also began that process. This is the subject property at the other end of that block. A couple of years ago, these two properties were rezoned to C2 R2 Residential. And so this project, this property is asking to be rezoned to R2. The planning commission heard this item and recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. With that, I conclude the presentation. Open any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Do members of the council have any questions? This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Coke? Yes.
I move to adopt ordinance number 20-1234, amending the zone classification and district boundary for the 4100 Arizona Boulevard, tract 2253, block 2, lot 1, from C1 to R2.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Coke and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.12 is ratified purchase of Caterpillar Packaged Generator from Empire Power Systems and authorized use of general fund contingency as partial payment source. Mr. Keen?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Item before used to ratify the purchase of a generator here at the community center. As you know, the community center is an emergency shelter. One of those requirements is that we have a backup power source. We had to replace the original generator that was installed in 1999 due to a blown rear cylinder. We are utilizing a source well contract for this purchase. Not only are there many discounts involved with this, we also will receive a four-year warranty in replacement of their standard one-year warranty, so it's actually a very, very good deal. And the total contract price is $138,526.10. That will be coming from multiple funding sources, including the Parkson Recreation Budget as well as a general fund contingency. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. Is there any questions from any members of the council? Yeah, great job to you and your team for getting such a good value on this, this generator. It's been something that we've needed at a good price, so thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to ratify the purchase of a Caterpillar Packaged Generator from Empire Power Systems and authorize the use of general fund contingency in the amount of $70,000.
Second? A motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 8.13 is award bid for hot mix and cold mix asphalt products to Campbell Ready Mix for fiscal year 2020-21. I believe that's Mr. Frostley.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and good evening, Mayor and council. This item and the two that follow are very similar in that they are our annual purchase for construction materials that we need down here in Public Works to perform our jobs. The first one, as you just indicated, is the award, the bid for the hot mix asphalt and the cold mix asphalt. Cold mix is typically used for temporary patches for potholes and trench repairs. For instance, when our water guys repair a mainland, a water main and a water service leak, things like that, they patch that back with a cold mix. And then we schedule our street crews to come back and do a permanent fix with our hot mix asphalt. We opened bids in late May and on the cold mix asphalt, we got three bids. One of those bids was rejected for not meeting the requirements of the bid. They were, it was an outfit out of Tennessee that was actually proposing to put bags, 50-pound bags of cold mix on a truck and ship them to the Public Works yard, which doesn't, didn't meet the requirements of the bid. So rejecting that one, then our local supplier, Campbell Ready Mix, was the low bidder. On the hot mix part of this bid, we only got one bid and that was from Campbell Ready Mix. So as you know, we have a longstanding relationship with the Campbells. We feel that these prices are fair and we're recommending approval for both awards.
Thank you, Mr. Frostley. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Frostley? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Lane? Yes.
I move to award the bid to supply and deliver asphalt hot mix and asphalt cold mix to Campbell Ready Mix for the itemized unit prices listed on the attached FY 2020-21 bid tabulation plus applicable sales tax for fiscal year 2020-21 and authorize city staff to exercise the option to renew for a maximum of four additional 12-month periods.
Second, the motion.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Groth. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Are you on the same screen? Well, maybe. It might be me. Hold on, we'll see. Yeah, it was me. Totally. Yeah.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, moving to 8.14 is award bid for Ready Mix Concrete Products to Campbell Ready Mix for fiscal year 2020-21. Mr. Frostley?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Mayor members of council, this is your typical concrete that we use to repair sidewalks and water valve can collars, driveways and the like. We got one bid this year, of course, it was from Campbell Ready Mix. Once again, we think the prices are very fair and we're recommending award this bid. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Yes, Councilmember McCoy?
Could we get this a little shorter, Greg, next time? I move to award for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 purchase order price agreement for supply and delivery of Ready Mix Concrete Products to Campbell Ready Mix for the itemized unit price as listed on the attached ITB-B21-SRT-500053 FY 2020 to 2021 bid tabulation plus applicable sales tax and authorize city staff to exercise the option to renew for a maximum of four additional 12-month periods.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember McCoy and a second from Councilmember Coke. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. And our final public hearing this evening is item 8.15, award bid for aggregate materials to Campbell Ready Mix for fiscal year 2020-21. Mr. Frostley?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Yes, you are correct. This is the last item I have for you this evening, and it is for aggregate materials. Aggregate materials for us can range anywhere from mortar sand all the way up to 12, 24-inch rock and everything in between. We got, received one bid from Campbell Ready Mix. Happy again with the prices and we are recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Frostley? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Coke?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to award the purchase order price agreement for supply and delivery of aggregate materials to Campbell Ready Mix for the itemized unit prices listed on the attached ITB bid tabulation plus applicable sales taxes and authorize the city staff to exercise the option to renew for a maximum of four additional 12-month periods.
Second? We have a motion from Councilmember Coke and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it's probably a little bit late to tell you everybody this, but we did still take public feedback that City Clerk at LHCaz.gov via email we did not receive for any of these public hearing items. So I just wanted to make sure that for the record, we tell everyone that. All right, moving on to item nine, is current events. Do any members of the council have any council committee reports?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Groth?
But it's a brief one. Everybody knows the news about a potential new employer coming to our town. At the last meeting, I was not able to discuss this because it was incumbent upon all parties to let that organization make the announcements and be public under their terms as they see fit. I do know that there's been some questions in social media, and I just want to say a few things. First of all, the city council and the Partnership for Economic Development have been working together for some time now. And the idea was that we wanted to have some amount of influence in being a little more conventional with some of the way we attract business. And I would say that the kind of business that this represents is exactly the kind of target business this city would like to get. It has a very small water footprint. The business has a potential investment into the community of about $15 million upside to 250 employees. More importantly, these are the kinds of jobs that are going to be good-paying jobs and have good benefits associated with them. That solves a lot of problems for the community. People say, well, affordable housing, workforce housing. When an employer comes to your community and is able to lift up your employment base and offer higher wages and high-tech jobs, these jobs can include things like software engineering, CAD/CAM operations. They're in the manufacturing of medical equipment for, it's a kind of an extrusion press operation. There is no... of medical equipment for, it's a kind of an extrusion press operation. There is no large industrial presence, there's no noise-making, and there are no real discharges with this kind of manufacturing. The only thing is, you know, there's some closed-loop CNC lubricants in the, you know, creation of machined parts. So this actually ties in very well with the already-present high-technology manufacturing sector that currently exists in Lake Havasu. And people say, well, wait a minute. No, they know about Sterilite, but there are other manufacturers here. And one, of course, is AS9100 certified aerospace. They make control boards for the little robots that pick your parts out of the Amazon warehouse facilities. They make control boards for endoscopes that if you go to the hospital and have an endoscopic procedure, pretty much anywhere in this country, we made the boards here in Lake Havasu. And if, if you're with the Defense Advanced Research Projects Agency and you're with SEAL Team Six, our control boards are on your helicopter when you went into about a battlefield to take out Bin Laden. All of that happens right here in Lake Havasu. We have world-class CNC shops. This, this will be CNC as well. And our world-class CNC shops, you know, I had a chance to tour them specifically right at the beginning of the COVID because we didn't know that the Defense Production Act was going to be launched for Ford Motor Company and other organizations to produce PPE. So I went right to Sterilite and said, how much plastic do you have that's available that can be pressed into clear plastic? And, you know, the answer's hundreds of thousands of pounds. And do you have a press that's small enough? Yes, but we would have to actually create a mold. We need a CNC shop. I got to see some very high-end racing CNC shops in this town that are producing off-road racing equipment. Now, I didn't ask them what the price was, but Gordy's been around long enough to recognize racing equipment that's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. We have incredible talent in this city. We have the ability to compete with anyone, anywhere. And we have access to Class I rail. We have access to everything. We're on the Sun Court or the Canamix Quarter. Our target for bringing firms into this community should specifically run from Southern California to Northern California, because they're going to be able to come to this community and find an opportunity where we have people who can actually fill these jobs and people who will appreciate having those jobs. And as those jobs arrive to the community, it lifts everybody's wages up. When everybody's wages get lifted up, that solves a lot of problems like affordable housing, because then people can afford to own a house, and they can afford to have a lifestyle here. And it's a way that the economy is served by the free market as opposed to government having to get in and play with subsidies. So I just wanted to say, this is a very exciting opportunity for our city. And the organization that's proposing this investment in our community is, they have videos online, and they've made public meetings. And I invite people to ask some questions, explore what they're actually trying to do. And I think what you'll find is that this is a magnificent opportunity. The company, I will just add this and then I'll stop. The company doesn't just do what they plan on doing in this particular aspect. This is more production of presses that are used in medicinal, you know, manufacturing. But they also do things like drones. You know, I think of this in the Army. You know, you want to see who's on the other side of the building over there. You've got a little drone in your backpack, up in the air it goes. Do we have soldiers on the other side? They make things like that. They make probably about five or six different product lines. They run in the 10 to $25 million category as a manufacturer. And as it so happens, we didn't actually have to go out and ferociously recruit them. The owner actually has a relationship in Lake Havasu, and they want to come here. My recommendation is people pay attention to what this is all about. This could be very, very good for Lake Havasu City. I'm excited about it. And I'm really proud of the work that the Partnership for Economic Development has done under James Gray and their board, and also Mr. Lane over there, who had a lot of hard work in putting together kind of the philosophies that are now guiding that organization in conjunction with our city manager and the rest of his council, who agreed that we should start looking in those directions. And now that fruit is starting to be ready to be harvested. Can you imagine? Up to 250 jobs, all of them high-paying with good benefits. That will do wonders for our community. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the council have any other council committee reports? All right. Seeing none, we'll go to item 10, which is our final call to the public. Again, this is the opportunity for citizens to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Would anyone like to address the city council during the call to the public? Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. And go on to item 11, our future meetings. Our next meeting is Tuesday, July 14, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. It's a regular meeting, and it also will be the property tax levy adoption that Ms. Olson spoke about earlier. On Tuesday, July 28, 2020, at 6:00 p.m., will be a regular meeting. Item 12, are there any future discussion items? 13, now entertaining a motion to adjourn? We have a motion and a second. We are adjourned. Be kind to everyone. Thanks for being here.